Good afternoon. Welcome to the informational meeting of Tuesday, September 27th, 2022. Counselors Sale and Jensen are not here today. Would anyone object to me chairing the meeting? Hearing no objection, we will move on. First item up, counsel remarks. Any counsel remarks Seeing none, we will move on to our presentations. Our first presentation is the August 2022 Monthly Financial Statement by Sean Pritchett, our Director of Finance. Welcome.
Good afternoon, councilmen, council members. I'm here today to present the August Monthly Financial Report to you. We're going to go ahead and get that started with the economic indicators that we typically cover at the beginning of each presentation. We're continuing to see a general increase in the employment labor force numbers, which are up about 3.3% over this time last year. Labor force overall is up 2.4%, 2.5% over the same time period last year. As a result of that, you can see that our unemployment rate continues to decline. We are now at 1.7% in July of 2022. This is the lowest rate we've seen in 2020, excuse me, 22 years. Statewide is slightly higher at 2.1% and then nationwide we're sitting at 3.8% overall. Inflation continues to be a challenge as we're all aware. It did drop slightly to 8.3% in August, so down about 0.8% from where it was the previous month. As you're likely aware from seeing the news, the Federal Reserve did approve its third consecutive 75 basis point hike in September as they continue to battle with bringing down that inflation rate. And they signal that they will continue to do so until it is brought back down to more normal levels. As in previous, you can see the energy sector is really driving a lot of what you're seeing in terms of some of that inflation, still up 24% over where it was last year. I think the big concern here, though, is really looking at that food number at 11.4%, which is about nine and a half percent higher than what we were seeing prior to the pandemic, and it's the largest 12-month increase since the period of May 1979. If you do remove the food and energy from this, then the general all other goods is 6.8% as of August, excuse me. As far as building valuations, they continue to be extremely robust and growing as the year continues. Through August, we had about $1.55 billion in building valuations. This was tracking ahead of last year by about $821.3 million. These numbers that I guess are even difficult to even comprehend. It's the 113% increase over last year and almost a 300% increase over what we saw just two years ago. New commercials tends to, is continuing to drive this. This includes the multifamily developments, which is up, all new commercials up $662 million or about 220%. The largest driver of this is actually commercial developments such as strip malls, hotels, restaurants, an area that lagged behind during COVID pandemic. This is at $279 million up this year. That's followed by 190, almost $200 million for multifamily and then about $175 million for other office institutional, educational. So it's very much across the board. The only thing that's experiencing a slight, excuse me, a slight decline is new residential values, which are down about 7% or about $16 million. But interestingly, you will see that building remodels are up significantly for homes. And so that is actually up $36 million through this point this year or up about 78%. So fewer new homes being built, more people taking the opportunity to remodel their existing home. As far as total building permits for unit houses through August, we had 546 single-family units that were permitted. This is down slightly or about 92 units from where we were last year. That, as that sector continues to struggle with both labor and product shortages, we are up in terms of multifamily units. We have permitted 2,873 compared to 1,479 last year. So again, a 94% increase over last year and last year was a record year. Total units overall, just about 3,744, which is up about 1,300 over where we were last year. As far as sales taxes, you can see that for the month of August, we were up about 8.9%. So we're coming down slightly from what we've seen in previous month, but that's barely keeping up with inflation at this point when you have an 8.3% inflation rate at this. You'll continue to see that line, the 12-month line, rolling average, come down over the next several months as well, coming off the big gains that we experienced last year. With the entertainment tax, very much the same situation, slightly higher actually at 10.3%. So with that discretionary type of sales that this is taxed to, it is interesting to see that this was growing a little bit faster than our overall general sales tax was last month, as we continue to monitor what some of those impacts are in the economy. If you take a look at this by the industry, I think a couple of notable items that you will see for the July figures is a little bit of softness that we see in eating establishments, which is a little surprising because that's such a strong part of the entertainment tax, which actually did perform better. So there's some interesting details in that that I'm not quite understanding how that's kind of gelling out overall. The other one you'll see, home furniture, is down for another month. That's an area that had really excelled last year and now is coming down on some of those consumer goods. What really carried us in, in terms of last month was business services, which was up 9.3 million or 25%. And then manufacturing had a very strong month, up 16 million, about up 56% over the prior year. Lodging tax receivables actually only increased about 2.6% in August of 2021. And you're going to see this going forward. It'd be more meteor, as they've come up, the losses that they experienced the prior year, you're going to see more stabilization in this, these figures going forward. But really, this is driven off of the revenues of the hotels, and that's been averaging about 6% to 8%. So I do expect that might come up a little bit here in the months ahead. The bid tax actually went down slightly. Excuse me, it was down 4.4%. Bid taxes driven by occupancy of hotels. That's been holding about where we were last year, maybe slightly behind, sometimes slightly ahead. So I do expect that figure will come back up here slightly, but be hard, probably will be closer to zero for the remainder of the year. Overall, in terms of total revenues, you can see that we have received a total of 130, almost $134 million thus far through August. That's about 68% of our budgeted expectations compared to last year. We are at 66%, so slightly ahead of where we were last year. And again, this is being driven in part by stronger sales taxes that we've experienced up to this point this year, as well as significant increases in licenses and permits. That includes the sale of all the alcohol licenses this year. As far as expenditures, you can see we have expended 128, $129.8 million of our budget, which is about 59% of our budget. This compares to 61, where we were at 61% last year and about 59% previous year. So well in line with certain expectations we've had for the overall budget. I will point out that we will be bringing forward some supplements in the second and third meetings of October around a couple of issues. One will be related to lodging and bid taxes. This is, has no real net effect to us, but they are coming in a lot stronger than we had budgeted for. Those are all entirely passed through to the experienced Sioux Falls. So it doesn't have a net effect on us, but we have to make sure we have the authority to continue to, to make those remittances to them over the course of the remainder of this year. We may also be looking at, we have a couple of capital items that will be coming forward, small items generally, just some cleanup for the remainder of the year. And then we also, because of the steady increases we've seen in the fuel side, we may have to supplement for fuel for fire and parks as well. So we're continuing to monitor those budgets. We'll have those numbers brought forward here in the next month. With that, I'd happy to answer any questions you have in the yard to the August financials.
Very good. Thanks, Director. Questions for Director Pritchett? Counselor McCourice.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director. Quick, random questions on the ARPA funds specifically. I was wondering if you could send us a quick update on the public safety homeownership program, like how many applications have been submitted, how many have been approved, et cetera? Just trying to understand, is, is there people interested in that or is it a lack of availability? Just want to understand a little bit what's happening.
Sure.
Appreciate an update on that.
Yep, I can refer that to the Housing Department and they can kind of respond back on what they, I know they've had, at least I haven't spoken to them in a while. I know early on they had several applications they had processed, but I hadn't heard lately where they were on that stack. So I can make sure that they can share a report with you on where they're at with that.
Can you just remind real quick, what's the timeline on the ARPA? Is it through 2024 or '23?
It is through 2024. I'm not sure specifically if we used ARPA for that homeownership program. I'm thinking we did not use ARPA for that, but rather allocated part of their housing fund to fund that. I think it was actually general fund dollars we used for that. They are using ARPA funds, however, for emergency home repair grants that they're making to homeowners.
Thank you. Others? Questions? Not seeing any. I have a couple. Would you happen to know when the parking ramp bond would be callable, if it does have a callable provision?
I don't know the callable provision off the top of my head. I think it's many years out, though.
Yeah, I would think. And would you know, just hypothetically, if you wanted to pay off a bond early, but it wasn't callable yet, could you do that if you were willing to just pay upfront the interest that was owed through the callable date?
Given the rate that we have in that bond, we would be more likely to retain the bond and avoid future bonding. And it's not necessarily tied to ownership of that asset. So if that, that's kind of drawing your questions.
Yeah. Well, you know, as, just us considering all options with what to do with the ramp, just kind of thoughts about, you know, the timing of when you could...
We could continue the debt without the asset, if that's the question. We could sell the asset and maintain the debt.
You, you could.
Yeah, we did verify that with the legal counsel, bond counsel.
Little, slightly off topic, but it is financial. Over at, it's been a while since, since I heard the progress on this. I know this was something that was maybe close to Counselor Erickson's heart she'd ask about occasionally. Over at the, we had a entity that was in arrears.
Mm-hmm.
So how are they doing on that particular debt?
We are currently, I believe, at about $21,000 and it's scheduled to be paid off in equal installments by June of next year.
And the payments have been continuing to be, to be made?
They paid down about half of it. The agreement was they would pay it, half of the remainder this summer in addition to the continued payments. And now it'll just be steady payments until it's paid in full.
Yeah. And, and that was, that was at the orifice with an entity that had to catch up on a, on a bill. Okay.
Yep, correct.
Okay. Any, if no other questions, thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is 3B. It is 2107 340B Pharmacy Agreement Audit, and that's going to be presented by Ryan Lausing, one of our internal auditors. Welcome.
Thank you. Ryan Lausing, Internal Auditor. Thank you, council members, for taking time to hear my presentation today. I will be presenting our Lewis, our, the report for the 340B Pharmacy Agreement Audit that was presented to the Audit Committee in late August. So sure, first start with a little bit of background. In 1992, Congress passed Section 340B of the Public Health Service Act. And through this section, drug manufacturers agreed to provide discounts on covered outpatient drugs purchased by covered entities that serve the most vulnerable patients. And Falls Community Health is one of these covered entities. And under this program, those covered entities and their patients can realize substantial savings through price discounts. And this can range anywhere from $5 to over $600 per prescription, depending on the medication. And then on February 3rd of 2011, Falls Community Health partnered with Lewis, they entered into an agreement to provide those pharmacy services to those 340B patients with regard to those 340B drugs. We have a little table here that shows annual prescription and patient data. You can see in 2020, there was a bit of a lull due to COVID, but the numbers really didn't drop that far. And then in 2021, they jumped back up to pre-COVID levels and beat the 2019 numbers. So you can really see how many patients are being positively affected by this program each year. So our objective and scope of the audit, our object, objective was really just to determine if Lewis is compliant with the requirements of the agreement, especially in regards to patient eligibility, duplicate discounts, diversion, and insurance coverage. And then the scope, we took a look at the complete 340B process, the different softwares utilized, and then policies and procedures that each entity follows. And then we also did a detailed testing of a sample of 340B drugs dispensed during the annual calendar year of 2021. Before I get into the findings, I just want to state that the two most important pieces of compliance are preventing diversion and duplicate discounts. And diversion occurs when 340B drugs are dispensed to a non-eligible patient or a person who is not an active patient of Falls Community Health. And then duplicate discounts happen when 340B drugs are subsequently discounted by, or subsequently billed to Medicaid, resulting in that, that double discount. So we just wanted to reiterate that we did not find any instances of either of those two things happening, and Lewis is compliant with those two major requirements. But we'll get into the findings here. Finding one, we found that Lewis doesn't really have any inventory optimization processes to ensure sufficient levels of inventory for their patients. Finding two, Lewis does not utilize a tracking system, which is a requirement of the agreement. And this tracking system is really just a reconciling process after drugs have been dispensed to go back and verify that they were dispensed to eligible patients. Finding three, we found that 20% of prescriptions tested did not have a designation that the patient was 340B eligible. And then finding four, we found that Lewis was not currently providing all of the required quarterly reports listed in the agreement. So we'll get into our recommendations that we made for those findings. And for these, I'm not going to read out each of management's response for each recommendation, but I, they can get quite lengthy, but I will provide a general overview that both Falls Community Health and Lewis have agreed to and have begun remediating these findings and recommendations. So for our recommendation one, we recommended that FCH and Lewis work together and utilize the pharmacy software Lewis is, Lewis uses called Pioneer RX to establish a more efficient inventory optimization process. And then we also recommended that FCH kind of develop those minimum maximum levels for each drug and then also physically review Lewis's inventory annually, just to provide another check that they are keeping those 340B drugs and have the right amounts on hand and all that. Recommendation two was that we recommended FCH and Lewis work together to develop that reconciling tracking system that Lewis can use to go back after drugs have been dispensed and verify that they were too made to eligible patients. And then we also make, recommend that FCH make periodic checks of that tracking system to make sure it is in place and working Recommendation three, we recommended that FCH utilize their electronic health software, electronic health record software called E Clinical Works to allow providers to add that 340B designation to prescription forms. And then we also recommend that they update their annual provider training to include prescription form requirements so that providers get that refresher knowledge of what exactly they're needing on those prescription forms. And then finally, recommendation four, we recommended that Lewis start providing all of the quarterly reports that are listed in the agreement, just so they can be in compliance. And we do have an opportunity for improvement that kind of ties into that recommendation four that we'll go through here in just a minute. So we have a couple opportunities for improvement. The first one was that we recommended FCH update their e-prescription forms to list Falls Community Health. Currently, right now, the e-prescription forms only list their address, which is what Lewis is uses, uses to verify that it is from Falls Community Health, but just to be in compliance with the agreement. They can just simply slap that Falls Community Health at the top of the prescription form to be in compliance. And then the second opportunity, this is the one that ties in with those quarterly reports, we recommend that Falls Community Health review the agreement and update any sections to reflect actual processes and requirements as they're currently in place. We found that the, so the federal program sent out this federal register notice that had these 16 essential compliance components that it's basically a roadmap for entities to follow for their 340B program. And it does list a bunch of requirements, but also listed our suggestions or examples that entities could use for reporting requirements. And so this, our current agreement with Lewis kind of pulled those suggestions or examples in as requirements when they're not really, like really shouldn't be required. So just taking another look through that agreement and making sure that it reflects actual requirements of the program. So to conclude, we have determined that Lewis is compliant with the majority of requirements outlined in the agreement. However, we identified in the findings and opportunities ways that Lewis can increase compliance. We didn't find any instances of fraud, waste, or abuse, especially regarding those diversion and duplicate discounts, as I mentioned previously. And in addition, the recommendations that we provided are based on best practices and will provide additional assurance to increase compliance with the agreement and mitigate the risk of fraud. And then finally, we just wanted to thank Lewis staff, Falls Community Health staff, and then the City Attorney's Office for their assistance provided during this audit. And I welcome you to any questions.
Thank you, Ryan. Questions? Counselor Starr?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess my first questions are more directed to the Health Department to see if these have been put in place. So I guess I don't...
So they, they couldn't make it. They were tied up in other meetings and I can't forward any questions on, but they have already started working on some of them with Lewis.
They're too busy to meet with the council? They couldn't send someone?
Not the people I was working with.
That is not the seriousness of this process, as far as I'm concerned, that they're too busy to meet with us. We're part-time people who are trying to do our jobs, and to not be able to ask them questions in public is unacceptable. And you can pass that on, I sure will be to Dr. Chima as well. That's not how we operate the city, and that's not the seriousness of what we're doing.
Will do.
I guess I'm flustered enough and upset enough that I don't know how to continue with my questions without them being here to, to answer, give them a chance to answer, that they thought it wasn't important enough to answer our questions.
Right.
Understand how that's upsetting?
Yeah, I do. Yes, I do.
The priority, if we're going to have an internal audit process and they don't take it seriously, then we're not doing our job. So I'm trying to figure out that maybe our internal audit department didn't make it clear enough that they needed to be here today to answer our questions? Is that fallback on the people that are running our department now? I know that's not your fault, Ryan. You're just, I'm shooting the messenger at this point.
Got it.
But somebody needed to make it clear that they needed to send someone to answer questions. This isn't open and transparent government when they don't bother to show up. There's some pretty serious accusations that are made as part of this, and it's upsetting that they wouldn't feel it, that they'd want to be able to answer those questions and that they might send us an email to our questions individually. Again, that's a lack of openness and transparency that is really objectionable to how we do our job. As part of this, Ryan, who, what medical professionals, did we bring anybody in, a physician, a pharmacist, or anyone to help you do this part of the, the audit?
No, I did work with Lewis pharmacists, obviously, and interviewed with them, but we didn't have any third-party outside help.
One of the places that concerns me the most is when we make a determination, or this report makes a determination, that no evidence of fraud, waste, or abuse was identified. That's a legal determination that's made by a court, whether there's fraud or isn't fraud. We can suspect or not suspect, or the things were done that were unintentional. But to me, potential fraud exists when you don't provide information. They haven't provided reports and documented what they were doing as required by the contract. Would that not be potential fraud?
Well, you know, internal audit provides reasonable assurance. You know, we can't provide absolute assurance in any, in any stance. But, you know, as our, my second recommendation had said, you know, there, those reports aren't necessarily requirements based on the federal program. They were just listed as examples that should be provided. So maybe if, when the agreement was written, the 340B process wasn't in place yet, so they just kind of threw in some reports as requirements when now, then they started going through and they kind of realized, oh, hey, these aren't really, you know, what's necessary for the program.
So we've been half-assing it since this program started in 2011.
Just for the couple of...
So we threw out something into a contract to maybe that we need to justify it, that, you know, we throw some words down so that it makes sense. And again, I, I'm, I'm interested in the City Attorney's opinion that he would make a determination that there wasn't fraud.
Well, we only worked with the City Attorney's Office on a couple of the requirements, mostly focusing on the ADA compliance and then making sure that they're not, sorry, I forget the word.
It's okay.
Sorry, I can't think...
It's okay, but we're making a determination that there wasn't fraud, waste, or abuse. That's a legal determination. At least my lawyer friends will help me out with that. I didn't, I don't, I also don't have a legal degree, and I'm surprised, knowing our city attorney, that he would sign off on a determination that there wasn't, you know, to make this determination. I have a hard time believing he reviewed that, just with his caution towards lawsuits and things moving forward and, and making this kind of determination when we go through and show in the results of the audit, in the findings, that they're not following the contract. But then you're saying the things that are in the contract aren't important. They were just things that were, you're trying to speculate of what they did in the determination. And to, to make this strong of a statement that there isn't fraud, or that you, there was no evidence, which is still the same determination as far as my limited legal knowledge is, you know, we could say things like that we don't suspect fraud. There are other ways of maybe making the phrasing. And so that, again, is my concern. I'm also concerned again, like I said, that the, the Health Department didn't bother to show up. That's, that's just wrong.
They did come when we presented to the Audit Committee for questions they had. Yeah, I understand.
I'm not part of the Audit Committee. It's presented to us today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Starr. Others with questions? Not seeing any. Yeah, it, it actually is a little surprising and disappointing that they weren't able to come. You can't make them come, but, so I would...
I bet I can.
Share, share that as well. So, well, I'm referring to, you know...
No, I'm not mad at Ryan. It's not his fault.
Yeah.
Certainly not the department's fault.
So to the extent that, you know, you, you can answer a few questions at least. The, so they get a discount on the, with the 340B.
Yep.
So if I go and I, and I qualify and I get a discounted rate, what can I pay the difference with? Or what do I typically, is it cash or do I get to use Medicare?
Cash payment, or if they have other insurance coverage, just kind of depends patient by patient.
Okay.
But they are pretty cheap. They go down pretty, pretty low. The 340B prices are very low.
Okay.
Pretty much across the board. So it really cuts down those prices.
The, the inventory optimization process, is that really, is that largely focused so that hopefully the, you know, Lewis would have the drug on, on hand if I come, that I, it's going to be there? Is that what they're trying to do?
Yep, to make sure that they never run out. You know, if they get down to a minimum, then they automatically reorders back up. So they, they're never at zero, basically.
Who determines if I'm 340B eligible?
You just have to be an active patient of Falls Community Health.
But I mean, so like, what's the criteria? Is there like an income guideline or a member of a certain, or is it just if I'm a patient at Falls Community Health?
As long as you're a patient, yeah. But I don't know if they have certain requirements to be a patient with them.
Okay. Do they do electronic or paper prescriptions?
They do both. Mostly electronic these days, but they do do both.
Do both? Okay. And I'm going to circle back. I don't, did I ask you, can you go to any Lewis or is it just East Gate?
It's only one location on East 10th Street is the only location we're in agreement with them.
Yeah, I remember. It used to be, it's just East Gate. I didn't know if they'd expanded that. So what's that one?
Oh, they did add a few years back. They added another location, but then a couple years after that, they took it back off and went back just to the East Gate.
Sure. Okay. Okay. Very good. Thank you very much. Thanks for your work. All right. Let me, yes?
[inaudible]
Question? Oh, I'm sorry. No, no, that's fine. Let's go to Counselor Cole. I'm sorry.
Thank you. I don't know if you know the answer to this question, but if they're a patient of Falls Community, but they see a subspecialist, are the medications prescribed by the subspecialist, say cardiology, are they covered?
I'm sorry, I don't know if I understand that.
Okay. So if they're, like, say they go to Falls Community and they're referred to a specialist, cardiology, gastroenterology, endocrinology, and the endocrinologist prescribes a medication, is it still covered under this program?
Yeah, I believe it would, yeah.
Oh, good.
Because they are still an act, they're still a patient.
Okay. So it doesn't have to come directly from Falls Community. Awesome. Thanks. Thank you.
And as a follow-up, how does a provider know, you know, well, I suppose if you're Falls Community Health, you know that they're a patient, but I suppose the subspecialist would know they're coming from Falls Community Health and like, when they write on the script...
That situation never got talked about. Maybe they do go back and have Falls...
Maybe they do go back and have Falls, it'd be something I'd have to go back to them and ask, you know, sorry.
Yeah, interesting question. Okay, thanks. Appreciate it. Next up, 3C, 2106 Damage Recovery Billing Audit, and that is presented by our other internal auditor, Emily Newell. Welcome.
Hello. I'm not quite as tall as Ryan. There we go. All right, so, thank you for having me. We're going to talk about the damage recovery billing process audit today. For a little bit of background information on this one, the city, as a self-insured entity, needs to seek reimbursement for property damage and losses from third parties. It's important that they're able to recover those losses so that we can maintain our budget, et cetera. It's also going to directly impact other areas as well, so that's kind of why, at the highest level, it's important. These are actual dollars that we want to attempt to get back again. The most common things are going to be things in the Streets Department, so let's say you're driving down Minnesota Avenue and you hit a streetlight, stop sign, fire hydrant, those types of things are what it's typically going to be dealing with. For an overview of the process as a whole, the finance is going to be responsible for the actual billing, the overall policy and procedure that's related to that, whereas if there were any write-offs, et cetera. The City Attorney's Office, on the other hand, is going to be involved if it's going to go to small claims court, something like that. And then the departments themselves, they incur the expenses and then are responsible for getting the repairs, replacements done. They're also responsible for initiating that invoicing process, so there's kind of several different stages with finance at the top over the policy. We have a little bit of information just for 2020 and 2021 here, so you can see the departments that are most frequently having damages done. It's just the nature of how their department would be. I wanted to give you the fleet numbers here, but for this particular audit, we didn't do detailed testing of the fleet process because vehicles are sort of a unique aspect of that, so that would be treated in its own separate audit eventually. This was more looking at property type of claims rather than vehicles. So streets and traffic is up there at the top with a little bit with street maintenance and parks, but traffic mostly. And then this gives you an idea of how much revenue we had collected back on the invoices that had been sent out. So there's not necessarily everything, I'll go back a slide for you here. These invoices that were sent out in 2020 and 2021 are not exactly dollar-for-dollar for the ones that were received in for revenue in 2020 and 2021, because sometimes there's a delay. So maybe a 2019 accident, it went to claims, et cetera. So there's a time period that might go by. It just depends on each accident individually, but then you have a general idea, though, of what the revenue we're getting back on these types. For the objective and scope, we looked at the effectiveness and efficiency of the damage recovery billing process to ensure that the city's recovering labor and material costs to repair those damages to city assets. The detailed testing was counted year 2020. And there are three findings for this audit. That first one, we're looking at the materials that were invoiced in just one city department. This is not citywide, but there was one department where they were including an overhead charge that was a leftover in years previous. That was standard for multiple departments, and it had gone away, and that standardization just hadn't made it its way to this department. So it was a very small, it was not traffic, so it was not one of those high-dollar amounts ones. It was water, so it was a much smaller. For the second finding, the estimated labor rates were being utilized for invoicing in just one department. That was parking, again, a very small number there, but the standardization was not passed along quite there. It was kind of a leftover from how things had previously been done. They were using, I believe it's a $25 flat rate, and typically, it's actually more than that is what the actual invoiced amount was, so they were most commonly probably actually under invoicing, but it would be better to get that standardized, so that the policy says it would be actuals that we would invoice for, and so just getting that to actuals for that one. And then finding number three is billing for damages to property claims and procedures not formally documented. And that's just getting at that overall, that standardization of getting each department on the same page, to make sure that there are really detailed policies or procedures for each, that we're going to stay consistent. Again, like Ryan said, I'm not going to read through the entire management response and recommendation here, but I'll give you the gist of it. Management did also agree and has already started implementing all of these recommendations, and we've actually already conducted the follow-up on these as well, and with the exception of the second one I'll get to in a little bit, they already have them fully implemented, and the other one is in progress. So this one, they are quite a ways forward in getting these in place. So the recommendation was essentially that each department responsible for processing damage recovery claims have a formalized administrative procedure in process, with finance being the overarching common denominator between all of those, so that we're all on the same page, you know, not maybe having the one with an estimated rate over here and an actual, just to keep it all consistent. And like I said, they had already actually created an updated policy and procedure to have that in place. The second recommendation was to establish a monitoring program, so that once we have that standardized procedure in place, that somebody is going back and making sure that they are following it and that things are being done efficiently and effectively. They do have that actually already added into their new policy and procedure document when I followed up, and they're, they're going to call them process audits, I believe, and they're planning on implementing that already by the end of the year to start the actual process auditing as well. So they agreed with that one and are moving forward. And then recommendation number three, this one is regarding just having everything stored electronically. We're recommending, there were just a few departments left over that were maintaining only paper copies. There wasn't any instances where we weren't able to find the paper copies. All supporting documentation existed and was available, but the vast majority had already moved to having everything digital, and so we just wanted to get everything on the same page and get that, that. So that was related to an opportunity. It wasn't a finding, but just to get them all digital. And they've already made that change as well when we followed up. That department is now scanning everything so that it's digital. And then another opportunity, recommend a formalized procedure for departments to aid in the decision-making process of just exactly when a write-off should be initiated, and the dollar amount thresholds for those. They did already update their, I believe it's called the Billing and Collections Procedures Policy, to include more detail about write-offs. So they were following the process already, but we wanted to see that documented more formally, so that all the departments could be on the same page. And then our last one is kind of in regards to the software. So across the city, they've been implementing Viewworks, which is really a total asset management software, and because a lot of these do involve an asset that has been damaged, it is a great opportunity. They can log the hours for the repairs, the work order, the police report information all in that one place, and so we just saw an opportunity to have them, as they continue to roll out that software across the city, to make sure that it's incorporated with the damage billing as well, which it already had been, just to make sure that it can be continued to use. The departments who were using the Viewworks already found it to be a really efficient way to get damage billing done. And so they also agreed with that, and that's more of an ongoing one, as it's just rolled out to additional departments. And so in conclusion, we determined that the process was being conducted efficiently and effectively. However, there were some areas that they were doing a particularly good job, and that was in generating that initial invoice and getting the process started really quickly, which is one of the best ways to get paid, is that if you can get the invoice out as quickly as possible. The cost-recovery ratio was also very good, and the percentage of invoices outstanding and accuracy of the claims were good. There were some opportunities, though, to strengthen the controls and the overall process, and that was really more around standardization, to make sure that a lot of the departments had moved into that standardized way of invoicing the actuals, and just to get everybody on the same page there. So the recommendations provided are based on the leading practices and are just aimed to provide additional assurance to mitigate the risk and potential fraud that could be related in there. We did not find any evidence of fraud, waste, or abuse that was detected, and that was related just to our scope. And as Ryan mentioned, reasonable assurance of evidence for this one. We would like to thank the Finance Department, Risk Management, City's Attorney's Office, and Public Works. This was one that really touched a lot of different departments, and they were very helpful in making sure that we could get it done quickly and already followed up on. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Emily. Very detailed and thorough. Counselor Selberg, please.
Thank you, Counselor Naitzer. Emily and Ryan, nice job on your maiden voyages here and presentations. It was very thorough. A question on, that I have for you, just making sure I'm reading this correctly, and I guess my question is regarding kind of around accounts receivable. So if I'm reading on the one page, property damage invoice totals, and then I turn the page, property damage revenue totals, so I mean, am I reading it right? So in 2020, we invoiced out 217-806, and we got paid 159-376, so there's an in-between still hanging out there in accounts receivable.
Correct. Yep, and some of those were maybe, we had paid in something in 2019. When they go to small claims, it does really lengthen the process. There's not a whole lot we can do about that. Sometimes things take longer, but yes, that, you're correct, that there's not necessarily a one-to-one for that invoicing.
Yeah, I was going to say, because then if I look at 2021, the invoice totals are about 217 again, but then we actually got 248,000, so apparently we're maybe getting something back from the...
Yeah, sometimes a small claims will go through that maybe is larger, and so, from a couple of years back, and then you'll see like a bump.
Okay, gotcha. All right, thank you.
Counselor Starr?
Thank you. I already went off on Ryan, and I apologize for that, for nubbing his fault, but timing is always good when you get to be second. One of the things that I was looking for in the report, and I can't find it, is there's not a statement from the internal audit manager that because her spouse is one of the people we reviewed, there should be a statement or something that says she wasn't involved in the process and had taken a backseat to that. Am I missing that somewhere?
So she didn't actually conduct the audit. We do always put that in there when she is the auditor. The, my detailed testing from this sample did not include any parking for that portion of it. We do, let me see here. I think you're talking about, it's usually near the end there on that page.
I guess I was looking for a statement, rather than saying, just assuming she had nothing to do with it. It needs to be more positive than that. It needs to be the reverse of it, that when she doesn't or does, because if you read the report, it can't, I, I don't even know if your name's in here anywhere when I read through it, is it?
Not to the very end, that the performed by, yeah.
Gotcha. And that's fine, then, it's there at the end. That's what, what needs to be there, but I think overall, there needs to be a statement when someone has a conflict and isn't allowed to participate in an audit, it should be stated. I think the public doesn't know she's gone, so we can't use that as an excuse.
Yeah.
And that we have interim directors for the department, but to not have that statement in there, I think, again, it's about transparency and openness.
Sure.
That's something that should be there.
So you can tell that it's, yeah.
I'd ask more questions, but I look around the room, and there isn't anyone from the administration to answer them either.
We do have, yeah.
I got a couple. I just, I want to know a little bit about, was it Viewworks? Please.
I can also help you with Viewworks as well.
Well, she might be better on Viewworks than I am. Cody Papke from Finance, so if you have questions on the policy-procedures side, I can help you. Viewworks, I can take those questions by not, may not, Dean's got more of the knowledge on that side, but we definitely can take your questions, but...
No, just an overview of how it works. I'm not looking for anything in-depth, because I wouldn't understand it anyway, but I nod a lot.
Yeah, so Viewworks collects all the different various assets of the city, assigns a location for those assets, assigns a dollar amount for those assets. So when something is damaged, that software, we can actually look up what is, where it's at, what the particular item is, and what the cost of that is, as well as we also put in the labor costs when we fix something like that. So a work order can be developed through the Viewworks software, rather than putting things on paper, rather having things manually. It just creates an electronic process that's going to be more efficient for creating work orders for this billing, so...
Well, and it's a lot easier to explain to someone that you damaged this piece of property we already had a value to it, rather than after you damage it.
Correct.
And that part of it.
Yes.
Do we, as part of that, and maybe this is Emily, I apologize.
No, you're fine.
I'm thinking about a traffic light on 17th and Cliff, or that was an old one that hasn't been replaced, but do we replace things and then negotiate to pay for them? Or are there some cases where we wait to replace things until we can come up with an agreement with the person who damaged the process? Because that seems a little, yeah, I know, it's deeper than finance. And I guess that's, that's been my concern, or I had a neighbor talk to me, well, yesterday actually, about that light, and I think he had explained it to me that they were trying to, because it was an old system, so that probably is a good example of what I'm thinking, so...
I don't believe that they ever wait because they're negotiating. We go and get quotes, or in a lot of cases, like those lights ones, they do the work themselves. And so that asset, or that Viewworks, is keeping track of the person who went out there and fixed it, the number of hours, the supplies that were used, et cetera. So no, not, in my audit, there was no instance that they would be waiting for something to play out in court-wise. And if it's not us, then they go and get invoices from a vendor. But most of that traffic and street would be things that we would be fixing as a city.
Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, I do have a couple. Do you have any, any idea, and I don't know if it was something you looked at, like, you know, these numbers, as you said, some of the, some of the payables don't necessarily match up with the year, so it's not apples-to-apples necessarily, so you can't just look at this and kind of glean from that. Ultimately, the percentage that we end up writing off of damage, if you looked over five years?
I would say that the amount we actually write off is probably minimal. I would say less than 10%. And I will also add the caveat that even though it's written off, we are constantly in a collection process, so even if it's written off, we may collect it, and that might be part of why you're seeing the numbers the way they look up here. AAA, our collection agency, is constantly trying to collect on this stuff, so you might get something 10 years later, but the amount that we write off is actually fairly minimal on that stuff, even if it's an older, an older receivable.
And that really goes to like gap rules, that after so long, you can't count it as an accounts receivable, but you might end up in the future getting paid for it. You just can't show it as a receivable.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, so basically, we try up and through 90 days, and then we send it to collections where we write it off, and then it comes off of the books, but it doesn't stop, we don't actually stop collecting on it, but that percentage, even at 90 days, is still relatively low, though, so...
Okay. And then my other question is, what, is the process for the reverse, meaning like, okay, the city, let's say, is driving a snowplow and knocks down a mailbox? Does that have anything to do with this process in terms of how we deal with compensating somebody for damage we did? Or is that some totally different?
I think you still use the Viewworks system for that, but I think there's a little bit different process for that side of things. But tracking the costs and the hours is still using that app, you know, that Viewworks system, so...
Sure, probably a risk management thing in terms of how that works.
Right, yep.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Great job with the audit, both of you. All right, there's no other questions. We are going to move on to public input. Anyone who would like to make a public comment for up to five minutes on anything we talked about today? Welcome.
Scott Ersmann, Sioux Falls. A little speechless after hearing some of the stuff that we heard today about these audits. I did look over the audits, read through all the detailed reports yesterday, and the thing with the Lewis thing should be concerning to us, and one of the main reasons is, is because of pharmaceuticals and the danger that they can have in getting in the wrong hands. And I think Counselor Starr made a good point. And I think Counselor Starr made a good point. We don't know if fraud existed, whether that's accidental or not. I mean, it's a pharmacy. We, we know that, that there's so many, you know, Ts and I, you know, Ts to cross and Is to dot, and unless, you know, you're actually in there watching it. And, you know, it's a little concerning that someone from the health department didn't come and talk. And Starr also brought up the 17th and Cliff. I live right by there. I thought the lights were just taken down because they didn't want to have them there anymore. And I find out that it's probably been a couple of years. I'm trying to figure out why it's taking so long to replace them. This, I mean, look at how fast we cleaned up after storm recovery and other things that we've done in this city, and we have lights that are gone for two years with no explanation, you know? I don't know what's going on there. But surprisingly, Counselor Starr did bring up something that I was wondering about for a while. Do our auditors have a manager right now? I don't know. I don't know. They've been doing the presentations, the internal auditors, they are not the managers, they are the employees underneath management. I haven't seen Hyder Hare of our internal manager for quite a while. I'm assuming that she's gone. Doesn't really matter why, I guess, whether she was terminated, went to another department, or just quit. But when we hire appointed officials, whether that's for the mayor's office or, or for the city council, appointed officials have a very public meeting when they get, you guys have to vote on it publicly. They have to publicly come up here and explain why they want the job. I, I wonder if we've never learned a lesson from when a former city clerk was let go, where they had a private discussion in a back room, and they got nailed for it. It was an open meeting violation, and then voted to, we don't know what they voted for. They came out of the room and they voted, and she was gone. If someone is appointed, and not a union employee, I'm talking about a director or a manager in the city, whether that's for the city council or for the mayor's office, when they have a public meeting to appoint them, where they're called a rock star, they're called a rock star, there should be a public notice of some kind, a, a press release at least, saying that this person is no longer with the city. I really don't understand what we're accomplishing by not telling the public that the internal audit division no longer has a manager. Or I'm sure somebody's watching them. They're doing good work. I was, I read the reports. They're, they're wonderful. They, but they, they are actually internal auditors, and that's what they do. So they're doing their job. But it would be really nice if somebody, anybody, preferably the chair or the vice chair, put out a press release saying that we no longer have an internal auditor manager, and we're looking into whether we're going to replace that person or not. Open and transparent government folks is really damn easy. It's not hard. And you seem to think that this is the most difficult thing to do. How long were you going to cover this up for? How long were you going to wait? Three months, four months, five months, six months from now and go, oh, we're hiring an internal audit manager? I didn't even know we didn't have a manager anymore. Is that going to hurt anything just to say that she's not here anymore? You guys really need to grow up.
Thank you. Anyone else with public input today? Seeing none. Thanks for coming. Have a good day. This meeting is adjourned.